Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole meeting for March 18, 2025. I called this meeting to order and asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Epstein?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We'll begin this evening's Part One of Committee of the Whole with Budget. So I will turn that over to, I believe, Chairman Laporte.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we will review proposed budget for Public Works, Professional Services, Finance, and Central Services/IS. And I'll hand it over to staff for additional detail.
Thank you, Chairman Laporte. Tonight Tyler and I are going to go over the Public Works operating budget. With me tonight, I also have Mike, Blake, and John, our supervisors in Public Works, that can help answer any specific questions you have in the budget. But before I get into the budget, into the various operating budgets, I want to have a shout out to these guys. They helped put this budget together, did a great job, and wanted to go over some of the accomplishments over this past year. As you know, many of you attended our first Public Works open house last fall. It was a success, and we're looking forward to doing another one this fall. After 10 years of planning and construction, we finally have just about come to the end of the bittersweet water reclamation facility. I think a lot of you have seen that the project actually received Project of the Year through APWA, through the suburban branch and the chapter. We just attended the luncheon for the chapter last week. It has now been submitted to the National, and we're hoping to get that award as well. Speaking of awards, Mike Warmus actually received Manager of the Year for Right-Away, both at Fox Valley Branch, at the chapter, and he is also being submitted to the National. So we've got our fingers crossed that... Continue on awards. Tree City Growth Award for the fourth year in a row, and the eighth year for Tree City USA. All this happens through all the efforts that everybody puts together for there and keeps things moving along in Bartlett. We also completed our largest water main replacement project on Oak and North, Painted Schick Tower. We've actually received quite a bit of compliments on that tower. You don't really notice it until it gets freshly painted, then it really stands out. And we completed the Sterns Road Booster Pump Station. As you can see, we were very busy this year and completed some very important projects, and we're looking forward to next fiscal year. I will start with Streets, which is on page 239 of 292. I've kind of already covered the summary page. As far as the highlights, you'll see that our budget actually shows an increase of 49%. But the bulk of that is the capital projects that were approved, I guess, in January, February. They then get put into the line items under Streets. I'll go over that when we get into the line items. If we take those out, it's actually a 4% decrease in the Street budget. Street Maintenance Summary on 244. Really, the only change, we're proposing a Management Analyst Intern, so an MPA intern, to help us out on some of the administrative things. You'll see that on the Personnel Request. That's the only addition we have, and you'll see that in the other budgets as well between -- it'll be a third between Streets, Water, and Sewer. Capital Outlay, we've got quite a list for Streets. We've got two large plow trucks due for replacement, a one-ton pickup, 16-foot utility trailer, a new paver. We've talked a lot about paving bike paths and some of that stuff. Our paver's 20 years old. We actually bought it used in 2011. It's seen better days, and it's getting to the point where we're looking to replace that piece of equipment, so we can continue to do bike paths, cart paths, that type of stuff. We've got stand-on mowers, portable message sign. This is the construction message sign that we put up at our construction projects. We've got one in Streets, or in the PD has one. We're looking at adding one ourselves, so we can do both sides. When you're going northbound, southbound, or east-west type thing, that we'd be able to cover more area, more space. That would get split between the three divisions. We're proposing Open GOV Asset Management. Currently, the village has Open GOV, where we do the building permits. This is an add-on to that, where we would -- we've talked quite a bit about asset management. This would allow us to start bringing all of our information that we've been getting through GIS, and all the information that our guys are getting while they're doing maintenance, bring it into a system where we can actually start putting reports together on our pavement conditions, you know, all the things that we talked about previously on asset management. This will help put us -- put reports together for us, and allow us to best select which roads to do, which water mains, all of our infrastructure that we need to maintain. So it's a tool to help us do that planning.
Dan, is that a one-time fee?
That is not a one-time fee. There's an initial -- the $90,000, I believe, about half of that is startup and setup, and then there's going to be an ongoing annual fee. Now, this is only the Street portion. We're proposing to take it in steps and do Streets first, which will include fleet maintenance, all the Street assets that we have, tree inventory, all that stuff, stormwater. It'll allow us to get started, and then the plan would be, in the future, to add Sewer, add Water.
So if half of it is the startup, then $45,000 is the annual fee?
It's an annual fee.
Just for Streets, though?
Just for Streets.
Who would be using it?
All of our staff.
So is it by user basis, then, for the pricing?
I believe it's unlimited. Once you buy this, it's similar to what we have in the Building Department. Everybody has access to it. So everybody would be doing -- we would -- the key behind it is to have the guys out doing the maintenance. They'll have iPads or some type of device out there, and as they're doing tree trimming, cleaning of sewers, you name it, they're entering that information into the system. It's getting uploaded to that, and all that data is being added in, so that we have a record of everything. Right now, it's all individualized. We have information, and then we hand it over to GIS. They create a map for us. You've seen like the water main map, the pavement maps. Right now, the way that works is, we have our list, we hand it over to GIS. This will allow us to kind of use a software that'll put it together, so that it's not handled multiple times by multiple people. It'll be continually, every day, it's being updated.
So wouldn't that would -- would that decrease the budget requirements for GIS, then? Since they're not going to be doing that?
I don't know that would request -- redo -- it would take some of the burden off of them, yes. But it's not going to really -- I mean, they still have -- they have more than what they can do between all of the departments. So it would just soften some of the blow -- we wouldn't have to go to them as much to be able to create the maps that we need and that type of stuff. But they would still be involved in the whole process.
I think it also will help us with that level of service data collection that we looked at a few months ago when we were doing the capital. When we talk about what the conditions of our roads are, what the conditions of our other assets are, you know, we've got $2 billion worth of infrastructure, and being able to stay on top of the conditions of those, I think, is, on an ongoing basis, is something we've struggled with for many years. And being able to have it all in one place, updated consistently, and in a program that we can use across departments, I think is important.
Right. And then, kind of on that same point with the asset management, another nice thing that it does is, when you implement it, you also get a condition assessment with that, whatever asset it is. So it ranks what they call the critical failure. So like with roads, when they're, you know, really split, cracked, all that, that's considered a failure, potholes. And as we do work to them, that changes that level. So like one question Mayor asked in the past, if you wanted to have a rating overall of 80, what is that? You can, once you get enough data into this, you can literally ask it to run these scenarios. And that's what the communities that have had it for multiple years, places like Buffalo Grove, Wheeling, are two of the most prominent with it. They've created multi-year plans because of the data they've collected with this.
What would be the next portion of Open GOV after Streets? Like, what other part of the software?
Either one of the utilities, water or sewer. I haven't really looked at it that -- that's, I mean, trying to do it all at once, we felt it was going to be way too much, so it was like, let's pick one. We thought Streets would be, hopefully, the simpler one of them, and then kind of build off of it from there. We could work out the bugs of how to implement it, and then we would come back at a later budget to say, okay, we're ready to add water, whatever, utility.
So we already have Open GOV active, correct? So is there a discount, or are we buying an entire separate, I'll call it subscription, by doing that? And is there a way to put them together and get a package price, even if we included water and sewer in that?
My understanding, it is -- it's just adding a module, so we're not having to rebuy Open GOV. We already have that portion of it. It's -- you add modules. So like, right now, we're proposing to add Streets. That's what the cost is.
So Streets is $45,000 a year, administration or GIS separate? Okay. And I did have a question. The two dump trucks, are these carryovers from last year?
No, they're not. Everything is -- everything that was on the list last year, it's either in the process of being built, or it's here.
So we would be caught up at this point, once those vehicles arrive. This is the new set that would be...
This is the new style with the stainless steel chassis that have a longer lead life?
Correct.
Lifespan? Okay.
The good news is, the lead times have become months, not years.
Okay. And then regarding the paver, does this paver allow you to pave more than our current paving unit?
It's actually the same size.
It is?
So it goes from eight to 13 feet. We don't want to go any bigger, just because we're doing a lot of bike path. If you go any wider, the smaller ones, from either 10 or 12, they're not going to work on our paths.
But are we currently using our paver?
Yes. Currently, yes.
We are?
Yes.
Any other questions on Capital? If not, I'll move. Oh, we have -- we have another admin vehicle was the last item. Professional Development, there's really no change, other than you'll see the APWA Conference was bumped up, because it's actually in Chicago this year. So we'd like to give opportunity for some of our staff to be able to attend some of the day events that go on. So that was bumped up slightly. Professional Associations, no changes. And Line Items is on 250. You'll see the Temporary Salaries, that's the MPA Intern. We also have been using a part-time engineer, you probably remember him, Bob Allen. He's been working for us Tuesdays and Thursdays to help with development engineering, and then any other engineering activities we have him on. So we'd like to continue that on a part-time basis, and then our summer help. You'll see an increase for Fourth of July rentals. That's all the barricades and barriers that we have, that we work with the Police Department Ticket Management for Julie, and Maintenance of Streets. The big items, you can see the 138 and the 437%, that's the Capital Project. So we've got the downtown town center, which we're going to talk during committee, and the Bike Pass -- Bike Path under Route 59, that we're currently working on. And then, the landscape is Town Center and the Metro stuff that we've talked about before. We continue, knock on wood. Our salt usage has been very good lately. Hopefully, we're done for the season, but things like Sunday happen, and you never know. But overall, it was another, so far, mild winter, and with our liquids program that Mike has been perfecting, we've really seen a decrease in our salt usage. So we're starting to bring that number down. Holiday Lights, we've got under Street Light Maintenance. We're proposing to get some -- we need to start replacing some of the holiday lights that we've been doing, and then we're looking at additional holiday lights. Other than that, Stormwater Facilities, that's pretty much the Country Creek Project. We're adjusting that based on where this project is rolling with engineering and construction. It's -- there's a lot of permitting, so it's kind of a guess right now, but that's where we're at for that project. And then, the machinery and equipment is just a carryover from the Capital Items. That's pretty much Streets, unless you guys have any questions.
Have we sold out the Cemetery Colombarium?
We have not. Where -- what is there?
We're almost halfway sold, right now. So we'll see what happens after this year, and then we might be looking at adding another one next year.
Might be worth putting in the trending now. People are dying to get in. There you go. Every time we pass the cemetery, I tell that to the kids. Since they were four years old, they're 20-something now. People are dying to get in there. That's right. Keep guys like me out.
All right, we'll move on to Water.
All right, so I'm going to cover Water and Sewer, and Dan covered most of the highlights, so I'm not going to get too into those. But just as a gist, our Water Division, you know, there's currently six guys in the division, and the supervisor, and you know, they're responsible for maintaining the over 200 miles of water main, over 2,500 valves, 2,500 hydrants, our three booster stations, and keeps us busy. So our Water Budget this year is seeing an increase of 4%, and that is almost exclusively attributed to the DuPage Water Commission. At the time, they were estimating a 5% increase, but that is going to be -- our DuPage Water rate is going to be 4% increase. So we purchase our water from them, so that's where that's going. One highlight that I wanted to touch on, on page 19, or was it 257, is that one thing we've been able to do is continue training our in-house staff on doing sampling, completing rounds on the pump stations, which has lessened our reliance on outside contractors. So you'll see later in the line items, that portion has gone down, because our in-house guys can handle it. So moving to page 21, in our Water Summary, some of the activity measures are there. And then, other things to highlight that we've been utilizing more, instead of hard copies and paper of the logs for the water, we've been using a system called Waterly, which tracks trends in the different items we have to input. And we've been using this for both water and sewer, and so it's a lot more efficient, and we're able to report back what we're seeing a lot more efficiently. And on to the next page, we've already discussed the MPA Intern. And so this would be someone who'd help all divisions, all departments, and hopefully...
That's what you were.
Yeah. There are a lot of us in this room, so hope it would be someone that can stick around for a while, and then also eventually give these presentations. Moving on to the Capital Outlay, Items Two and Three were discussed in Streets, and they'll be brought up again in Sewer, because they're being split. The one specifically for water is the Leaf Detection Correlator. So this, right now, would be for, I'm sorry to say the word, for main breaks. When, right now, when water comes up, that's not necessarily where the break is. That'd be great, but that's not always the case. So right now, we have to call out a third party, so we have to wait for them to come. They charge a response time. So even though it's not the cheapest item, we would probably pay it off within two to three years, compared to continuously calling it out. We'd have that response time.
And that gets the water flowing faster.
Moving on, the only change in Professional Development, as we discussed, was having more staff attend the daily registrations for the National Conference. That'll take place of the Chapter Expo that is normally every year. No changes to Professional Associations. So moving on to page 26 for the Line Items. Overtime salaries, that's due to our current past experience, and then utilizing our staff on the rounds, which we've made up for that. If you look down a few spots to the Contract Operations, has dropped 11% because we're now using our guys instead of an outside contractor. Other ones that have increased, the Engineering Services. This one, even though it's increased, a lot of these increases are due to like cell tower reviews on the water towers that we have an engineer look at, and we do get reimbursed for those. We have to show it coming out first. Utilities that have increased, just for everybody, and that's electric and gas rates, and then the Sterns Pump Station being back online. And then, continuing on to the next page, the Meter Maintenance Materials, that one's increased due to like the grasslands build-out, but again, we purchase those meters up front, and then the developer reimburses us, or pays the meter fee. So we are getting that money back, and then some, but we have to show it coming out first. And that's essentially Water, unless there's any questions.
How much easier is it for the Water Department employees since the transition to Lake Michigan Water? Like, I mean, they used to have wells to maintain, and visit, and test, and all sorts of things. What do they -- what's different now?
So as far as testing, we still have to test Lake Michigan Water. We still go to every pump station daily to get a chlorine read. There's still EPA testing that's required. So yes, the wells went away, but we still have to do testing for Lake Michigan Water.
And we do still have to test the wells, not as often, because they're emergency use, but we still have to test those, I think, at least monthly? Yeah.
Is there a lot of maintenance involved in handling the wells?
I can't really answer.
Is there a lot of upkeep and stuff for our employees to do with the wells?
Not really. Well, we have -- we had two, four, probably four main ones that were operating at the Most of it was coming from Elgin. You know, 60% of our water was coming from Elgin, so that is no different than like coming from DWC. But as far as like maintenance on the wells, that was more of, we would have to call contractor to bring that in. We haven't had to do that, because we're not using them. That's probably a big change. I would say probably the biggest change is, we have less complaints about water quality, where we would have, we'd get a call for areas that were getting well water, and we'd have to do flushing to just get the water, you know, get it flushed, get that iron out of there and that. And we don't have to do that anymore, or very little of that anymore.
Well, if no other questions, I'm going to move on to Sewer, which is page 270. And so our Sewer Division is kind of made up of two subdivisions. There's the Operations, which handles the Treatment Plant, the recently Project Award-winning Treatment Plant. And then there's the Main End Side, which handles the Lift Stations, the sanitary sewer mains, anything with manholes, things like that. And so we've stayed busy on that end. We've continued to line the sewers, and now I can say, at the end of this fiscal year, all eight-inch clay lines in the Cook County area will be lined. So that leaves the big ones, which are more expensive and kind of a bit more to work with, but we're moving. And then, we continued the Service Lining Program. We did have 30 more service laterals lined this past year. And the other big sewer project is the Devon Forest Main and Lift Station, which is set to be complete at the -- towards the tail end of this fiscal year. Punch List Items will probably be throughout the month of May, but then that project will also be done. And so for this upcoming fiscal year, the Sewer Division budget is seeing a 4% increase. And a lot of that is due to the IPA loan payment for the Treatment Plant, and then also the service agreements that are with the new equipment, that'll go to extend the life of that equipment. And then, one other highlight I wanted to mention on page 35 is due to the new plant, and yes, there are service agreements that are involved, but we are saving, we'll see about a $200,000 a year savings on chemicals. We'll also see at least a $25,000 savings on utilities due to energy efficiency, and that doesn't even account for the grant that ComEd provided because of those energy efficiency And then, other items will be lowering sledge hauling, because the process will be more efficient. So overall, it's a much better process, a much more streamlined, and will -- should be set for the future in any upcoming permit changes, like phosphorus.
Are there any new contracts or new service agreements with the new plant?
There will be, yes.
Speak to some of us?
Atlas Cop Call, it's our plowers. So we have six of them, three for the digester, and three for the rations. They're turbo, screw, so they're kind of high efficiency, so they don't just turn on and stay on. They turn on and off, they ramp up to what the DO has set at. That would be the first one. We also have... We also have an increase on our APAC unit. That is actually, this isn't at the plant, this is at Brewster Creek for odor control. That's two on that page. Also, with this, we have all the new software. So, there's the Haku whims is our software for the reporting to the EPA. And also, our job kale that handles all the maintenance schedule for all the equipment. Let's see, Atlas Cop call.
Do we have any outside vendors that operate this?
No.
These are just the.
Yeah, those are the two biggies.
These are the agreements where it's kind of, they perform the big maintenance on this, you know, specialized equipment. And then, it kind of covers like a bumper-to-bumper warranty should any of it, something happen, heaven forbid. So, it's, it's not cheap, but it's significantly cheaper than if something happened and you had to buy a new one. And then, so, and back to page 38, that's the sewer division split of the MPA intern. So, on the next page, capital outlay. And again, four and five already covered. So, the first one is the SL RAT or Sewer Line Rapid Assessment Tool. Even though it's fun to say, and basically what it does is it's a piece of equipment that goes into a manhole, goes through the line, and then it gauges how full the line is. So, currently, our process of cleaning the lines to prevent backups, do all the preventative maintenance, is we just have to blindly clean everything. So, right now, we're on about an eight-year cycle. With this thing, we'll be able to see what needs to be cleaned and what doesn't. And it should cut it down to about a four or five. So, we'll be much more efficient at cleaning and preventing backups, surcharges, things of that nature. The in-pipe technology, this is more odor control due to the industrial users and, you know, that.
Yeah, this one is, we have it in, but we're relying on data from Elk Grove and ITasca. Okay, so, we just wanted to get it in here because we have to do something come July and August on the corridor at Sterns in 59. I'm not sure if you guys are, could smell some of the odors that come from Brewster Creek. And we just, we've been doing stuff since 2018 where I've had people call the IEP A and we had to do all this stuff. That's where we got all these orders. You know, we started with the APACs, we've been doing all this other chemicals adding. So, we have to have something in store. It's a, it's a technology where they basically put microorganisms in the sewer. So, they kind of eat everything that produces the H2S, if that makes any sense. So, they put, they do all this data. So, we're relying on stuff still, so.
Currently.
Yeah, I agree.
That's kind of the thought, is we continue to get order complaints on the Washington. If you guys remember, we've tried various different things. We're fine tuning the stuff that we have, but we wanted to have something in the budget just in case we need to add something else.
And this is, this is one of those rather have it than not need it, need it, not have it. But we're going to let ITasca be the guinea pigs. So, this is also one of those that'll be paid with those sewer surcharges that the industrial users, if they're not within their limits, has to pay. So, this isn't strictly on a user rate of any kind. And then.
Getting complaints?
Well, only like in the summer, you know, like about June through September, I would say.
When they're out on their patio. Right now, we don't, but when it gets hot and dry, it seems like is when we start to get complaints. We, we had a period there where things were really good. We thought we finally got it. And then, last summer, we ended up, remember, it was real dry and hot. And that's when we started to get some complaints again and we're like, what is going on? So, then, we were starting to talk to our vendor on the equipment, make sure that was dialed in and going back and looking at all the manholes and that type of stuff. So, we just want to be ready just in case we have that issue again.
Back for a second, like one of our, I think, short-term goals was the public awareness campaign. So, it sounds like we have like some data to show like if complaints were going down. What else do we have to show that that is working?
Basically, the customer service requests that we were getting, they went away. And then, all of a sudden, they started coming back. So, then, we were like, is somebody else dumping on us? And that's where we were starting to go back and look at. We found that our equipment needed to be turned up more. So, we got, we had that dialed up. We actually have them in kind of running through that piece of equipment now to make sure it's ready to go for when people are outside again in the spring, summer. So, it's dialed in. So, hopefully, we're good, but just in case we.
Is that something OpenGov also tracks? I know that was, we're getting it for streets, but is that where we're putting some information?
So, another aspect that OpenGov has is it can talk with our current resident request system. So, any requests that are put in there, currently, it'll be just anything streets-related. But once every division is on it, then all of them will be attributed to it. And so, anything that is on there, we'll be able to track, maintain, see exactly what was done, if anything's improving like objectively. And then, to go back to the data question, the only other way to really track odor data is something called Mercaptins. Like they, that's actually the odor-causing agent that is a technical name for it, I guess. And there's odor loggers that gauge that. But they're, we've used them periodically, but they're not continuous. The only other thing on capital outlay would be the new F-250, which would include a line bed and the lift gate. And this is, this would replace the current pickup that has the lift gate. And it's the only one that we have. Yeah, in sewer.
I have a quick question regarding the evaluations for vehicles. Are we doing those in-house or do we have an outside company that does that?
We do them in-house.
So, the guidelines are?
It's based off.
Where's the matrix that the guidelines are set by? Is that? No, I see that. I'm just saying, who comes up with the point system? How is that derived?
Each of the supervisors come up with their own vehicles in their own department based on the maintenance schedule that we do have in place and what's been, if it's been towed before and all that.
But there is a document that has set ranges and we can share that if you're interested.
Not very objective, right? It's hours and age and.
Right, hours.
Or subjective, I should say.
Yeah, hours, age, amount spent, repairs. And then, if you're in certain ranges, you get the certain point scores and then the total at the end. Fine, look into replacement, do for replacement, immediate replacement. Those are your four categories. And if, moving on, we've discussed the extra staff at the national conference. And then, no changes in professional associations. So, going on to page 43 for the line items. Attempt salaries, that's again the intern and part-time engineering. The service agreements are the maintenance contracts that we've discussed. Then, the other items that are changing is the third-party sampling for the permit, items that are required for that. And then, the reductions. And the last item on the next page would be the upgrade to the lab. That was not included in the overall treatment plan upgrade, but it is still 50 years old. And then, that's sewer unless there's other questions. Yes, that'll be done in-house. So, that's really just material purchase, like new counters, paint, things like that. Yeah. Yeah, paint existing cabinets.
Paint existing cabinets.
If no other questions, we'll move on to the big one, parking. Honestly, there's, yeah, there's no, no changes in parking. I think we have some people parking in the lot now, especially compared to COVID. But yeah, no, no changes, no requests. 15% didn't decrease.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
I have a question for Dan. What is the vast majority of our contractual services? Like, when I say that, I'm talking like snow plowing, maintenance.
We've got, so, snow plowing, we do have contractors that come in and do cul-de-sacs. We've got landscape contracts for various areas that we are, that we mow. We've got contract services for like streetlight maintenance, traffic signal maintenance. HVAC, yeah, all the like HVAC.
Concrete repair.
You know, all that type of stuff.
Do we do concrete sidewalks in-house?
We do a good portion of concrete, mainly focused around driveway permits so that we can, we can better react. Because we do have a contract that goes out every year for miscellaneous concrete where a contractor will come in. And that's a list that we collect pretty much from the fall through winter that people call in for whether it's a driveway or it's just miscellaneous trip hazards, that type of stuff. And they'll come in and, but they'll only be in for like a week or two and get that all done. And we have permits for parking or for driveways pretty much all season, you know, all construction season. So, our guys have kind of taken those so that we can kind of keep up with residents wanting to get their driveways redone.
It just seems like when I read your presentation, you know, head sheet here, we do save a lot when we do stuff in-house, whether we're doing bunkers or sewer caps. So, you know, as we go forward, there's items that we can do in-house. I think I'd like to see where we can find more efficiencies in that.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the stuff that we've kind of outsourced, it's the stuff like brush collection, mowing grass, those type of things where it's needed. But it's not really doing anything to maintain our infrastructure. We've put our guys more in doing the tree, the parkway tree trimmings that we can do in-house. It saves us money. Doing the concrete, like you said, you know, wherever we can on those, on the driveway permits and all that. Whatever we can do on concrete, we do our own main, main break repairs. You know, our sewer guys, when, knock on wood, we don't have a ton of sewer collapses or anything like that. But when we do, as long as it's not deeper than our machine, our crews are doing that type of stuff.
Thank you.
This is a good example of one of the services that we used to do in-house. Used to buy the very expensive street sweeper and maintain it and run it through town. We're able to outsource that and sweep the streets, what, four times more than we do internal. So, you know, we do look at those services and sometimes they make sense and sometimes they don't.
Thank you.
What kind of revenue does the parking lot generate? Are we breaking even? Are we losing money?
So, we, we made some cuts from the parking fund. We were losing money. So, the last two years, we're, I think, last year, we were up like $3,000 in the parking fund. So, we're about breaking even.
Are we going to try another department?
Sure.
We've got 10 minutes. Can you slide a quick one in in 10 minutes? Joey, you want to?
140. Finance is on page 140. I had told Paula the one bad thing about moving IT and GIS out of finance is I literally don't have anything exciting to talk about in our finance budget anymore. But maybe that's a good thing, finance is boring. Before I get to the numbers, I'll just touch on a few, few items here. So, this summer is going to be our last year on our contract, three-year contract with our auditors, Lauterbach and Amen. So, we will be coming to the board probably this upcoming winter to get some direction regarding that. Finance is following through with the implementation of three new sales tax rebate agreements. More brewing in the Bartlett Autumn Mall started January 1st, 2024. Both businesses received their first payout in July. All these agreements starts January 1st, 2025. So, they'll probably get their first payout probably next February. And then, Ace Hardware actually received their last payout on this boardings, this board meeting's bills list. So, that one will now be complete. As far as some of our highlights, on November 5th, 2024, the village board passed an ordinance declaring a Brewster Creek TIF surplus of 1.82 million that was sent to Cook and DuPage Counties. DuPage County did distribute their portion of the surplus, which was 1.765 million. The village Bartlett's share of that TIF surplus was $169,382, which went to the general fund. And then, the 2024 property tax levy was approved by the board December 3rd, 2024. The total levy actually decreased 1.61% from the prior year. So, I think that's pretty impressive nowadays for an entire levy, not just the general corporate portion to be less than the prior year. On the summary page, page 145. So, again, we did move IT and GIS out of finance. So, that changed our staffing levels from 14 down to 8.5. And again, that change is not affecting our numbers at all. We have no new personnel requests. We have no capital outlay requests. As far as professional development, it's the same as last year. Our big, our big-ticket item is the IGFOA State Conference in Springfield, Illinois. And that is for the director and assistant director positions. We have no change to professional, professional association. And then, our line item, so our personnel services is actually decreasing this year. And that is due to the retirement of former director Todd Dowden. Our service agreements is going up slightly. Our service agreements is going up slightly. We did take on one item from Central Services, and that was the folder, our check folder sealer. Our audit services went up $4,000, and that's because every other year, we have to do a full OPAB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. We have to do an evaluation. So this is our year for the full valuation. Everything else is pretty similar. Our big changes were in our transfers. So last budget, we did transfer $2 million general fund surplus to the municipal building. We do not have that in this budget. And then our transfer to 59 and Lake Street TIF is increasing from 360,000 to 600,000. And again, this is the Bartlett Autumn Mall sales tax. So again, 50% goes back to the Autumn Mall. The other 50%, we are transferring to the 59 and Lake Street TIF to pay off their outstanding loan. That's really all there is in finance unless there's any questions.
You still have five minutes.
I told you, we're, we're really boring in finance. They always ask me that all the time. I got no joke.
I knew a joke.
Remember that.
We are right about one thing. Dragged it out a lot longer.
We can, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until our second chapter of the Committee of the Hall.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Laporte. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins? Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Good.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall Meeting, Act Two, on March 18, 2025. I call the committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky? President Wallace?
Here. As we do now, if anyone would like to address the committee, we'll use this as the town hall portion, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Does anybody like to address the board at the committee meeting here? Dominic, is there anyone online that would like to address the board?
No, there is not.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving right along, next item we have is standing committee reports. I believe we are going to go right in order now, so Public Works and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really looking forward to this. This is the design and building contract for the Metro and Town Center project. We brought this back for discussion and review. The designs, the options we're looking at is the extension of the stream, sound system, signage, and LED lights. And I believe Tyler has this. Dan, you're going to go ahead and take it?
I'll go ahead and cover it.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. So a month ago, we talked about the Town Center project, and the board asked us to come back with some options on Town Center. So we've got those options, and hopefully we'll be able to kind of go through that and see what you would like to add or not. This is the area again. Just so you know, we did have a pre-construction meeting today. Mark Tam is getting ready to start construction the week, the first week of April. That would be on the section at the Depot Museum and the east, the piece west of the metro station. So the area north of railroad will start up in April. That's about a two-month project. And then they'll do the sidewalk along railroad and Main Street. And then Town Center is scheduled to begin in June. So it's now. All right, this is just an overview of the, of those, of that work again. We can get to Town Center. So this was the original, or this is the original site, right there. No, go to the, so this was the, this was the concept that we had brought back where it has, you can see the fountain section with the half-stream, I'll call it, and then it was going to be more of a rain garden to the south. One of the questions that was brought up was, you can go to the, you can go to that, was extending the runal to the south. Go one more. Which is this proposal. So you can see here that the stream heads all the way to the south end, the walkway runs along the stream. That would be running water with the fountain at the top. I think this incorporates what the board was looking for, but we're open to suggestions or which preference, I guess, is the original design or this extension. We have cost estimates later on, but I'll go through all the items and then we can get into all that. Go to the next section. Signage was another thing. If you recall, I had brought up the idea of a message board, because we always put banners up there for all the events that we have. We don't want to do the banners. I know we don't want to do a message board over there. So we came up with some other sign options. And this was option A, which is more of, if you're familiar with Bartlett Hills and the sign that we just did there this past year, it'd be more in that style. If you could go to option B. This is more of on top of a wall that would be, you could see where the red bubble is. That sign would be more located there. More of a Bartlett Town Center Plaza area sign. Go to the option C. You can see this is more of a photo op, if you will, same type of concept as B, a little bit more enhanced. One, two. There was a couple benches that we were looking at. We've seen them at different parks and we brought it in there. Go back to the, the new design. You can see we have bench swing options. That's where we're looking at putting those. Go ahead and get down to the LED lights. We also talked about uplighting on the, the, all the trees. This actually goes through the rest of the project as well at Metro and the Depot Museum. But having the ability to change the colors, so it can be during the holidays, you can do whatever, you know, you would be able to change for the different holidays if you want, or we could just have plain white uplighting. One more.
You're going to put the lights in, you just want to have different colors, right?
Do we just want to talk about each design element? Do we want to talk about the signs first so we don't skip from things?
Yeah, I was just going to go through it quickly and then I wanted to get to the numbers. Then we also had a comment on sound systems, so we've got some numbers, leaving on the budget. So, I've also got, I forgot to introduce Jim, Jody, and Bob with the Tesca and Burke. We have a $340,000 allowance for these items. You can see the price for the extension of the stream is roughly 165,000. The various sign options. One of the ideas that I'd like to throw out there, is we still don't solve the issue with posting those banners with the different events we have. One of the ideas that we've talked about staff-wise is putting, and we might have talked about it with you at one of the committee meetings, is rather than put a sign at Town Center, put the message board sign out front of Village Hall, which is basically across the street. But we would be able to, we would look at trying to get it to face north-south, so anybody driving down Main Street would be able to get those announcements, and we would no longer have to put those banners up. And we could put all kinds of messages all the time.
That's a good idea.
Messages. Seems like that would be a better use for the signage.
Almost every village hall has gone to that in front of their village hall at this point.
A lot of them have.
It'd be like the Park District one on the corner, right, of St.?
Or Lyons.
I feel like we're, we're trying to keep the spot looking like natural and kind of peaceful and having a blinking sign there.
Right, yeah. That's why I'm, no message board, but even, I don't know where it's seen between signage A, B, and C. Do you feel there needs to be a sign there of one of those sorts? I'm just asking to just put that money towards a message board at Village Hall.
Yeah, or some other option.
Or some other option.
So just looking at the budget, I'm, personally, I like the extended runal. Get rid of all the signage. I'm not spending $100,000 on a swing.
How many swings is that?
That's two swings. I was going to recommend.
Yeah, too much.
postpone the swings, they're a little pricey. They could always be added later.
Then we'll have the tenants complain that there's kids on the swings at midnight.
Right.
So, and then the color LED. I'm for the colored LED.
I have a question about that before you move on. Would those be timed to go off at a certain time?
I think we need a tire swing in those trees.
Yeah, they would be programmable, so we would be able to either run it from dusk to dawn or from dusk till midnight or 11:00. We would be able to adjust that.
I think it's a huge add when they like have like St. Patrick's Day and then Christmas and all of those.
Yeah, yeah.
Shining in anybody's windows, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't like the idea of putting a sign down there, a message board in the park. A park is to be relaxed and whatnot, you know, and people don't want to see the sign. Yeah, let, let's put it out in front of them.
I like Stephanie's comment, just keep it natural. So the extended runal and the uplights, that would be my unofficial vote.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'll tell you, I think.
What are we putting, a sound system in there?
No sound system.
Esa's guy has a sound system, we could just use it.
Yeah, just tell Esa to open their door.
Can I ask you something, Dan? Assume we put a message center in front of village board, a hall, right? The signage option C right now is letters that are on top of a seat wall, is that correct? Could that seat wall incorporate that message of Town Center in the brick and stone itself to reduce that cost?
Instead of being on top?
And it would reduce the maintenance of kids jumping on it, because they would just be pegged into the brick itself.
Yeah.
And that would serve as a nice seat wall for people to sit there and have lunch versus putting all of it up with the signage.
Right, like take the, the Town Center Plaza portion and do letters.
Just drop it down into the brickwork. Have a nice flat surface there.
I will ask Jody if she thinks that's possible.
If the answer is yes, that's all I'm asking, you know.
Dan, you could go carve it in once it's done.
Chisel. Flintstones.
I'm Jody Mariano of Tesca Associates. I feel like everybody asked me the same question, same question. So I wanted to just mention regarding the stone. So the stone that's used throughout the Town Center Park is a large outcropping stone. They're like three feet long by two feet deep by like 12 inches tall, and they're very rustic, like large stone boulders. What was shown here was more of a veneer stone, so something a little bit finer detail and smaller. If we wanted to mount text to a stone, we would want to do it to that type of sign, that veneer stone. It would just be a very different kind of stone than what else is throughout the park. So we could consider mounting a sign to a free cash concrete wall or that stone with the veneer. I just wanted to make, let you all know that it's a very different kind of stone than what's throughout the park.
I don't think we should sign it. And the other thing, didn't you, at one of your presentations, mention that it was actually, there was a placard that said it was Brewster's Creek, it was symbolizing Brewster's Creek?
We talked about interpretive signage.
Yeah, so interpretive, if there's going to be interpretive signage there, then that might be better than having a big sign that says Town Center that overshadows the...
I'm not, I'm not sold on the actual Town Center Plaza wording.
Yeah.
I think it's better to have like Bartlett.
Downtown Bartlett, yeah.
Well, I was even going, going with what Brewster's Creek, but we already have the industrial park named Brewster's. What about Wallace Plaza?
There you go.
I agree with you, it should be Bartlett, downtown Bartlett.
Yeah, just downtown Bartlett, yeah.
I advertise downtown Bartlett, people are down to, they know they're downtown Bartlett. It doesn't make any sense.
The people getting off the train that don't know they're in Bartlett, then they would know.
I wouldn't put any signs. But mark each sign or the signage up here and just leave it as a park. And as far as the sound system goes.
We could always put a sign.
I didn't realize it was 45 to 65,000 dollars. I'm still in favor of a sound system, but I think we should kick, put that down the road and reevaluate that after this is all completed, you know, a year from now or something.
I think we ninety-six the sign idea, and then it's always something you guys could add later.
And as far as the lights, I think the more, the better. I think this is going to be a focal point for our holiday.
Absolutely.
For Coco Crawl, Marion Bright, and all the other events that go along with that. And at the end of the day, I do think this is going to stimulate the rent and hopefully get that place back on track on the rolls, so.
Why is the bench swing $50,000?
It's probably all stainless steel.
It's a very nice swing.
You can go to Home Depot and buy one.
Bench swings, our engineers would be safe. Their swing, they're not like your typical park swing that's on a steel chain, for instance. They, their engineer has to beam the structural column and support system, so it's, it is $50,000 per swing. That breaks.
Those look awesome.
Is someone making a commission?
Pardon me?
Someone making a commission?
Are the, where, where does one exist now?
I was going to say, if anyone, we designed a streetscape in downtown Kankakee, which I know is not close to here, but if anyone's went to downtown Kankakee, there are bench swings on your streetscape on Skyler Avenue.
Vacation spot.
They even have a fancier top, and they're even more expensive. They have like a purple top. We worked with the manufacturer to provide us something that was a little bit more streamlined and simple. We knew that budget was an issue here. But, you know, I will say, when we do things like bench swings, moving things in a public space, we want to make sure that it's something engineered properly.
I like it.
So Kankakee can do it.
Question, the LED, the LED lighting?
If we're going to do this project, let's do it right.
Is there going to be light pollution from the existing streetlights that you won't see the LED lighting because of the surrounding lights? You know what I'm saying? Is it going to downplay the LED lights?
Lunch.
We can claim cheaper than 50 grand, I would guess.
Let's have Dan do that.
So, you know, when you think about the, the park environment, you know, there is certainly always going to be lighting, a lot of lights that we have. But the intent of the lighting that's on the base of the tree is just going to cast a glow on the tree. So it's just providing a little bit different effect, a little bit more mood and emotion, if you will. And think about also that the fountains in the, in the raised basin section of the fountain, there are several jets, those are also color changing. So we're going to have a lot of different light effects in the park.
Well, Dan wants to be able to land a plane there, so.
Well, there would be benches here, right? Even if we don't have bench swings, right?
There will be benches, yeah. But I think this was just based on a comment that was raised earlier, you know, could be incorporated swings. But if you look at this image, there are, where it's on bench swings, there are two bench swings shown. And if you see those, those gray rectangular boxes in the middle, those represent, oh, thank you, those represent just freestanding benches. And then also you see they're circular shapes that represent fixed tables and chairs with sun shades. So we want to provide a variety of places for people to sit in different configurations. You know, oftentimes people will want to come to sit in a place and necessarily permit to sit on a bench. They can sit on a stone wall, they can sit at a table and chair, they can sit on a bench and move around, but it just gives lots of different options.
So I really like the runal going all the way, and I do think the bench swings are super cool. What else, what else in line with bench swings are something that are like, that's awesome?
You mean other?
What other items?
Well, there's lots of different types of.
Fire pits.
Yeah, the fire pits that I've seen in public spaces are usually designed to be so enclosed that you can never actually.
You know, you know what that reminds me of, though? Holland, Michigan, both my boys went to college there, they've got heated downtown sidewalks, and then every other block, they've got fire, fire pits that people stand around.
Has anyone seen the fireplace in downtown Wheaton?
Or Geneva.
Geneva. The one in Wheaton, and we weren't involved in either, but the one in Wheaton is completely enclosed. It's like chinned with glass or?
Yeah, that's the way these are in, in Holland. They're, it's not like you could.
Can't touch the fire.
No.
Don't let people to do that either, but, yeah.
Yeah, our town rolls up at nine o'clock at night. I think that'd be overkill.
I think the more you put out here, I think people will spend more time out here, especially if it's lit.
Can we stop the stream? Can we stop the stream?
Yeah, trout fishing, yeah.
I just know with a stream comes the need for a bathroom, so we may have to have a porta potty out there. Okay. So, Dan, you were saying you were looking at three swings? Is that what you were about?
Oh, two swings. So they're like 50.
So they're like fifty grand apiece, essentially, is what it comes out to.
And maybe we could, I, I think that would be a cool addition, but I don't think somebody wants to really swallow fifty grand, so maybe we could sharpen our pencil and find another swing maker in China or something.
Timo.
Oh, Amazon, yeah, let's see.
So to give them direction, we like, do we like the extended runal and we like the LED lights?
Yeah, the extended runal.
We'll move forward with those two items, is that?
I think so.
And I, I would vote no on the sound system, I think it's too clumsy, it's too.
Oh, yeah.
It's very subjective what kind of sounds you're playing and.
Yep, I agree.
We want peaceful.
We also in agreement that the contingency money that's in here, the allowance, would be redirected to a new sign out in front of Village Hall.
Yes, we would look at.
All under the same category?
Yeah, we'll look at putting that together.
Cool, okay.
Uh, would, uh, would it, would it be more beneficial to have the sign where there's the most traffic?
What's that?
Would it be more beneficial to place the sign where there's more traffic?
I just think it's an informational sign. I, I think it's, it's, you put up a lot of sawhorses with banners on them and they blow over and Public Works has to maintain them, where I think they can control and adjust the signage remotely, whether it's in front of Village Hall, I think you're going past it one way or the other. You know, we can look at other areas for digital signs in the future. I know Streamwoods just put some out on Route fifty-nine. We have one for Bartlett Hills on fifty-nine.
I was thinking Lake Street by Eastview.
Yeah, def, depending on how that tiff shakes out, we might be able to get one over there, too.
Yeah, maybe we do it then, okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all we have.
Is everybody good with their comments? You got enough direction? Thank you guys for being here.
Looks great, too, by the way.
All right, thank you Chairman Dany. That was fun.
It was, looking forward to that.
Community Economic Development Committee Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, we have one item, a BETA application for J.C.'s Mexican restaurant on one thirty West Bartlett Avenue. They've been a staple of the downtown Bartlett dining scene for the past eighteen years. Owner operator Louz Alvarez and her son Louis, Louis recently upgraded and remodeled the facility to improve workflow and serve customers dining in the rear outdoor patio. As part of their upgrade, J.C.'s was required to upgrade its fire alarm system to meet current code requirements. The applicant, applicant has submitted the first BETA request this fiscal year. It has estimated the fire alarm upgrade to cost twenty-one thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars, including a quote for eighteen thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars from United States Alliance Fire Protection, Inc., one thousand three hundred fifty dollars of materials from Home Depot related to the conduit, and an estimate of fifteen hundred in labor related to running the conduit. J.C.'s request appeared before the EDC's February tenth, twenty twenty five meeting, at which time the EDC unanimously recommended a favor of a fifty percent rebate to be issued for BETA eligible costs related to this project, estimated result in a grant of ten thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars.
Before you make the motion, we'd like to take this item off of the agenda. The, oh, were you getting there? I'm sorry.
I, I've, I guess I wasn't even expecting to see it, so.
I'm sorry.
It's on the agenda today.
And we have to leave it on when we publish it. Yeah, so.
Um, they're not ready yet.
Okay.
Um, and since the issuance of the BETA by you folks starts the time clock, we, we would respectfully ask to.
Got it.
Postpone this item. It can come back to committee, it's been through the EDC, but we want to give J.C.'s the benefit of the time to get their alarm design more down the line before we issue the BETA, just so that they don't run out of time on the backend.
Can I make a recommendation? Can we have this on the board?
Right to the board. I would just shoot it right to the board.
I'm not a huge BETA fan, but if anyone deserves a BETA, it's someone that's an owner, operator, that actually works their business and, you know, residents, I.
Well, couldn't we just send this to the board and just postpone it? I mean, we're just recommending it to be pushed to the board anyways.
I think we could just bring it back to the board when they're ready and then give them the benefit of that additional time.
All right, so we'll forward it to a future Village Board meeting.
There you go.
Si, señor. Thank you Chairman Gansey. Back to the previously scheduled program, which is budgeting Finance Committee Chairman Laporte.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, we'll hand that back off to staff for further discussion.
Who's on deck?
Uh, back to me. So we're gonna go to Professional Services, which is on page one sixteen. So Professional Services is part of our general fund. So there's no change to the Actuarial Consultant Budget. Legal Services, you can see in fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four, the actual expenditures were pretty high. That was due to the police union negotiations. So in the current year, fiscal year twenty-five, the expenditures has come back down below budget. So I think we'll be okay leaving the budget the same at three hundred and eighty-four thousand. And their contracts are approved by the board at the first meeting in May. For Engineering Services, the budget is going from sixty thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand. So this is for miscellaneous engineering expenditures that don't get charged to a specific project account. So normally we have budgeted, budgeted sixty thousand in the past. Costs have been kinda going up these last couple of years, so I bumped that up to eighty thousand. And then this is also where we are charging or budgeting for the water sewer study, so we're budgeting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. And then the Social Services line item, we have the police psychologist, Dr. Kami Joswin. Nothing is changing with her budget, so it's nineteen thousand for the annual consultation fees and seven thousand for the mental health screenings. And then we are requesting one additional social worker, so I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Chief Nadenoff.
Thanks, ma'am.
You said, uh, the, so the general government expenditures, is it, the super, the longer spending coming out of this fund? Or is it not? Not under Super Fund? Can you explain?
Because we're hiring.
Because we're hiring the fiscal folks and the engineering people to do the study, so we're not taking that from the energy, enterprise fund, we're taking it from Professional Services.
I mean, I, I disagree with that. I think that if it's a, if it's a water and a sewer expense, and it's related to that, it needs to come out of that fund.
I mean, we did have it in the budget, I think, three years ago for sewer study, and that was also, we did Professional Services back then, so.
I just, I'd like to know the exact expenses of a department. That's just like, I don't mind that Public Works goes over to the golf course and works on bunkers, that's not the point. The point is, I wanna know exactly what the expense of a golf course is. So like if an employee that's at Village Hall is working at the golf course or doing something, and their expense isn't in there, that's a problem. Just like if Public Works is working over there, their time should be billed to Bartlett Hills.
Understood.
All it is, is just, it's numbers, and it's where you put them. But I wanna make sure that if there's a sewer and water expense, like a study, it should come out of that fund. That's all I'm saying. And it should be done equally and actively for the services provided. That's all I'm saying.
Want to clarify something on the bunkers at Bartlett Hills, they were done by maintenance, uh, our maintenance staff at Bartlett Hills. There was a small involvement for a very, very limited amount of hours, not time, hours, with Public Works. And I've clarified this with, uh, with Bartlett's staff, and I've mentioned it before, but the bunkers were all redone at Bartlett Hills by, uh, by the Bartlett Hills staff. The, uh, the estimate we had originally, if we had to send that out, don't hold me to these numbers, was somewhere in the area of about, Scott might be able to help me out, six hundred thousand dollars if we had an architect come in and redo the bunkers. Oh, Matt's here.
Hey, Ray.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a grievance with the work.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about that.
He has no grievance with the work.
I think it's actually great.
He thinks it's great, he's just saying that he just wants to know if it was fifty dollars spent from Public Works over there, that it's notated in Public Works' budget, that's all.
But I think, I think we're, if, if it's my understanding, the study is more beneficial for the finance department than it is for Public Works, because the finance department is the one that's going to be using those numbers to determine what you need to charge.
When the finance department sends out water bills, do you bill the postage and the bills to the finance, or do you bill up to the water and sewer fund?
They are billed to water and sewer.
So.
We can, we can build this to water and sewer, we can build it into the rates, we can do that. My understanding, you know, it's under Engineering Services and that's why we put it in Engineering Services, but we can certainly put it into the Water and Sewer Fund and build it into the expenses for the enterprise funds. Yeah, we can do that.
So, just to follow up on what you just mentioned, are all Engineering Services, does it come out of the general government expenditures?
Ones that aren't, ones that aren't associated with a particular capital project.
So I think like the engineering for the current year is mainly engineering for grasslands and the North Oak resurfacing project.
Back, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and Village Board, I apologize, I'm losing my voice a little bit, but I'm gonna do my best. We currently have one full-time social worker, uh, under contract through the Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services, NDFIS, and we are requesting a second full-time social worker to supplement and expand upon our program. I'm gonna take a few minutes to speak about the status of our current program, highlight some of the recent successes, and discuss how we can utilize an additional, uh, social worker. We have a very, we are very proud to have established a strong and collaborative relationship and partnership with NDFIS, and it's truly been transformative for our village, allowing us to offer a broad range of services designed to support individuals, families, and our community. In twenty twenty-four, the Police Social Worker Program experienced a significant increase in activity, receiving two hundred and seventy-nine referrals from police officers, code enforcement officers, and others. This figure represents a forty-two percent increase compared to the previous year. Thirty-one percent of the referrals were related to mental health, demonstrating the need for mental health support and intervention in con, in conjunction with law enforcement efforts. Twenty-five percent of the referrals involve domestic violence, underscoring the challenges related to domestic abuse and the importance of having trained professionals available to assist victims and facilitate their access to necessary services. Other referrals included family conflict, substance abuse, basic needs, sexual abuse, grief counseling, and senior assistance. We had thirty-four diversion program referrals and twelve redirect program referrals. The diversion program is in lieu of juveniles receiving a citation for alcohol, tobacco, nicotine products, or cannabis-related offenses. Juveniles participate in multiple educational sessions to help establish healthy alternatives. The redirect program is in lieu of arrests for more serious status offenses like battery, theft, fighting, or trespassing. Juveniles participate in individual and group sessions conducted by NDFIS. It's an opportunity for juveniles to stay out of the juvenile court system. As a result of our collaboration with NDFIS, we've been able to achieve some remarkable milestones together. I want to highlight a few successes, uh, success stories that emphasize the impact of our partnership and the value we've created for our residents. Recently, our social worker received a referral from a code enforcement, to a code enforcement officer to assist a resident living under hoarding conditions. Our social worker identified an affordable cleaning service to enhance the resident's living environment and conducted counseling services to address the emotional difficulties of parting with years of accumulated belongings. Our social worker provided ongoing support to chronically, a chronically homeless individual. She developed an action plan establishing dates to meet certain goals. As a result, the event, individual obtained a homeless status verification form and a free valid identification card. This allowed the individual to successfully secure shelter and apply for Medicaid and medical transportation services. Excuse me. In February, our social worker received a referral regarding a student refusing to go to school and for chronic absenteeism, thank you. These calls often require reoccurring police response, and officers do their best to encourage the student and support their family. However, our social worker built a rapport with the student and family and was ultimately invited to the school to participate in the student's IEP meeting. Advocating for the family's needs, the student was allowed to attend school with a modified schedule with the goal of graduating high school. To highlight some of the positive impacts on our student population, I'd like to also read an email sent by one of our so, uh, School Resource Officers. Since taking over a year ago as the SRO, I've been able to offer students the options of completing the BPV diversion and redirect programs when appropriate. In the past year, I've sent thirty-one students through the diversion program and nine students through the redirect program. These programs have not only kept juveniles out of the court system, but have provided them with helpful education and mental emotional support. I've also seen through these pro, offering these programs that it has allowed me the opportunity to build relationships with some of the students and gain their trust. One student in particular now greets me in the hallways each time we see each other and has joined, and has even joined a sport at the school. It's great to see students turn things around and take a better path if given a choice. Social workers play a vital role in transforming lives and, and, uh, communities, often working behind the scenes to create some meaningful, meaningful change. We are requesting a second social worker to expand upon our successes and offerings to our community. This expansion aligns with the mission and goals of the Social Worker Program, and it will improve the efficiency, reach more people, and enhance the overall impact of the program. One of the initiatives that we'd like to implement with the second social worker is the co-responder model. The idea is to have the social worker available to respond to on-scene calls for service. The co-responder model allows for the social worker to de-escalate and calm individuals, provide referrals, and link individuals to resources, and to assess and screen for behavioral issues and act as a liaison between the individual and family members. With two social workers, we can stagger their shifts to increase availability for responding to these on-scene incidents. We would, we would plan on staggering their shifts so that we can cover more time that our officers are out on the street. And initially, when we proposed, uh, moving from a part-time to a full-time social worker, we had the two referral programs that we implemented, but the co-responder model was difficult based on how busy one social worker is doing all her counseling sessions and responding to referrals, and the second social worker will really give us that ability to expand the co-responder model. Another initiative is conducting home visits to follow up on referrals where the social worker was unable to make contact with the individual. Of all of our referrals, we were unable to make contact with fifty-seven individuals. Home visits will be a proactive way to reach more people and help us to bridge the gap to connect with people who may be in need of assistance. Lastly, with an additional social worker, we can implement some of the ideas proposed by our social worker to increase services and outreach. One of the programs that our social worker would like to implement is group counseling for Spanish-speaking-only victims of, of domestic violence. It's a very underrepresented group with barriers to seeking assistance, and there's an established curriculum that she would follow over the course of several group sessions. So that's kind of a summary of where our program is and some of the things that we'd like to implement going forward.
Can you explain the referral process?
So for the most part, the referral process is discretionary from either a supervisor or an officer that's responding to a call for service. So if they're on scene and they find somebody that's in crisis or experiencing some type of mental health episode, needing any type of additional services beyond the scope of law enforcement capabilities, the officer supervisor will fill out that contact information, and that ends up going to our social worker who then reaches out and tries to, um, connect with the individual or the family that's in need. And from there, they will do, um, our social worker is primarily dealing with them while they're in crisis, tries to get them out of crisis. If they need additional treatment or resources, then they will, uh, NDFIS has an abundance of resources that they will direct them to if they need further treatment. But they come from other sources, too, like code enforcement, if there's a hoarding issue, um, any, any, anywhere from the community, we will take the referral process or the referrals. And one thing we can do is, there are levers that we can pull, um, to increase, uh, if we have a second social worker, we can lower the threshold for certain types of calls that, um, right now, there's a lot of discretion. Some agencies, all physical and verbal domestics will automatically go to the social worker, and they can follow up, um, you know, as needed and, and, um, so there's different ways that we can increase that total amount if we needed to, and right now, we just kinda ebb and flow based on the workload and how busy she is at the time.
And if we didn't have a social worker?
And if we didn't have a social worker, where would these referrals go to?
So that is what has been such a transformative process for us, having this, having a social worker. We are, we have a lot of training, a lot of mental health training, a lot of CIT training. However, when we're responding to a call, when we're dealing with, you know, an incident in our community, there's only so much time or training or education that we have in those, in that realm. So prior to having a social worker, we may have a form, a sheet, that has additional resources, and it's kind of that, you know, really outside of the Bartlett way, a handoff of a form hoping that somebody's gonna reach out if they're in need.
Township or the county level?
Township. It can be a lot of different things. If it's, you know, suicide hotlines or, you know, it can be things for, for students, for children, for...
And what, do you have a percentage of how many of these referrals are coming through the SROs?
The majority of the referrals are coming from patrol, from our officers on the street. The majority of our redirect programs and our diversion programs are coming from the schools.
Wouldn't U46 be cost-sharing that then?
So they, the way that it happens in the schools, they do have their own social workers. If it's something that the school identifies, there's a, there's a major push to have inside the schools to not be issuing citations, to not take law enforcement action. However, if, if a police officer comes across a student that's in possession of alcohol or tobacco or nicotine products, that is an incident where we would take the lead on that, and because it was a law enforcement's observation, they, that is something that we would take, and in lieu of a citation, they would go through our program for defer, for the...
It just seems that a privacy issue should go through U46.
So the majority of, the majority of those incidents do go through U46, and if it's a non-law enforcement observation, if it's, if it comes from the school or a dean's assistant or somebody makes their own observations, that will primarily go through the school. But our social worker does, has established good relationships within U46 and the schools. But they, at the same time, they kind of try to stay in their lane for what their responsibilities are.
Thank you.
So does the program only benefit Bartlett residents?
It is. Yeah. We primarily, the, any referral that comes in is for a Bartlett resident.
Are there any sources of federal or state funding to help subsidize?
We have looked at a couple different grant options. There, NEDFIS, the company that we contract with, has been beyond the threshold of something that we've been able to find so far. NEDFIS itself is, receives a lot of grants, and one of the things that they were doing with our, with, to try to be budget-friendly for us, asking for a second social worker, they lowered some of the indirect costs and the percentage of costs that they will charge us. But as far as grants that we have found for the police department or the village to help pay for that, they, they've fallen outside of the threshold that we would qualify for.
I, I, I think it's a bit of, my opinion is it's a bit of a slippery slope adding social workers. We've had a half, then we had one, now we're having another full-time. I think that it's, it's better to pump the brakes and see how we do with the one that we have full-time. What's it gonna be next? We have like five social workers and a whole social work department in the village? I don't see that as being a village responsibility.
How long have we had the, we've had one full-time?
Last year, we started.
And our, our use of that full-time has increased 42%.
So really, year over year, it's increased by over 40%, and that has to do with some of the, like, the levers that I was explaining that we can, there are definitely more calls for service and referrals that we could, that are necessary or would benefit.
Can you talk a little bit about how getting the, the person who's in crisis resources reduces the number of return calls that we have for service?
Yeah, that's...
I think that's an important, that's an important piece of, of the whole, you know, what do you call it, co-responder method.
Yeah, I do agree with that, and something we can share at another time as well, we do get quarterly reports that kind of highlights a lot of these individual success stories. There are some that, you know, are, you know, they seem like, really, they're maybe really important or addressing a major issue, but a lot of what we're seeing is the day-to-day, the day-to-day students not going to school. And that, or somebody that's repeatedly calling our records department, something that we're dealing with right now, 60, 70 times a day. And some of it's intangible because we're seeing those types of calls not repeat themselves, but it's hard to, you know, actually graph it and chart it to say, okay, well, this, this house is the first time we've ever dealt with them, the student wasn't going to school, they were connected to these sources, resources, and now they're on the right path. We don't see that, we don't see that they continue to call. It's hard to show that this family called, this person called 15 times, and now it's only been two in the last week. But anecdotally, it is happening over time, and we're seeing that. And that's where the officers are motivated and engaged to submit these referrals because they see, hey, this is a family that, this is a house that we've been to, you know, three times in the last weekend. The violence is escalating. This started out as a verbal domestic. Now we're back here the next day. It's, it's, it's teetering on a physical domestic where somebody's gonna be arrested or taken out of the home. They see that as an opportunity to intervene, get the resources that people need. And a lot of times, especially with domestic-related incidents, it's really tough for that victim to, to take that step, to reach out and to, and to seek resources. This is kind of a way that it's, it's brought upon them a little bit more with a little bit more pressure, and we do see, based on the success stories and the quarterly reports that we receive, that these are really being impactful. It's, it's being, it is changing lives and making the difference. And, and I do understand, I, I think that, you know, based on what we see in the numbers and looking at some other agencies, I don't think that we would be a three, four, or five social worker, you know, department. Just looking at some of the, the numbers and where I feel like we could continue with that 40% growth year, year over year, I think we would accomplish, we would be able to, to do that. But...
But I think some of this, some of this work has to be, be getting done now by someone else. So the way that I, I look at this is that we're taking on additional expenses and we're taking on additional work that somehow is being done in the system now, DCFS, whatever it might be. So as you do that, as you open up the door to things like this, I just feel like U46, whatever organization would typically be responsible for these type of situations, will just push it onto the police department's plate. That would be my biggest fear, is that it just gets pushed onto our plate. Maybe they're overwhelmed and they can't handle it, but then it becomes an expense of ours. And it really isn't our expertise.
It started as a part-time social worker.
This really isn't our, our...
It started as a one-part-time.
Yeah. I think, I think to the mayor's point, we can certainly put together more information. You know, we can look at this, you know, single social worker that we have now. I mean, I think a 42% increase is, is big. It's, it's, a lot of our calls are mental health calls these days. And, and in the past, we, you know, worked with the church group. We worked with Hanover Township and Wayne Township to provide those social services as well. You know, if the board is uncomfortable with adding a, a second full-time social worker, we can do a better job of tracking our costs, our repeat costs, you know, to better gauge whether or not the dollars make sense.
Can we pull some of that information now? Is it something that's already being tracked that we can pull to show? Because like, it sounds to me like, if you get called, you're going out, then the social worker. But if there's a repeat call, do you, do the police also have to go out? Or is it sometimes like the social worker can handle it?
Most of the time, it, it depends. If, if it's an emergency-type caller, we will, the police will still go back out. It is those types of calls that, after we do have a repeat occurrence, that those are the ones that are ultimately getting referred to the social worker. And at that point is when we usually see that drop-off, that the, that police aren't responding. And so one way we could look at that is based on referrals that we receive, we could look at like address history and things like that to see how many times we've gone out there subsequently. It's a little, there, there are things that we can do, I think, to track it. I just, it's, some of them might be one-offs, that there are successful interventions that are made, and then we don't, it's just doesn't become a repeat customer or, you know, house that we have to go to. But you wouldn't necessarily know that except for the fact that there was some type of intervention.
Is the current social...
Follow-up too.
Sorry.
No, I was just...
Social worker working five days a week actively doing her, hers or his job as a social worker?
Correct.
And if you put another full-time social worker on, is that another five-day-a-week job? Or is it something if the board's uncomfortable with, do we do it as a contractual to see, like a three-month contract, to see how busy a second social worker is before we allocate an entire salary to it? I mean, I'm assuming these social workers work for the village of Bartlett, correct? And somebody has to manage them, and somebody has to make sure that it's all processed and reported because it's under a microscope. All of the things that you do with social work in this state is under a microscope. And it just, it, you guys can decide, but it concerns me that this is a department that could, could get to the point where, hey, you know what? Our initial mission, I love the success stories. I think it's, I, I think it's spot-on. I see the difference between social worker and police relationship. It's 100% true. But I don't know if that's part of our lane as a police department. I'm having a hard time understanding that.
Well, I saw a presentation, some of us saw a presentation about DuPage, and there's a new building, and their goal was to have people call them and not call like emergency lines.
There, one, a piece of that goal, though, is to give the police department a place to take those people that are in crisis, and there's a, a place for them to go for DuPage residents.
We also have, Wayne Township also has a, they have not had an organizational meeting yet, but there is a mental health board now for Wayne Township that has been approved by the taxpayers. I don't, I can't speak for the Hanover Township side, but I think it would be interesting to see how we could coordinate with that organization.
When we first started the social worker program, a portion of their contract was paid for from the Hanover Park Mental Health Board. That was a grant that was provided. They no longer provide that grant, is that correct? I don't think they do. You know, this is a contractual service. We can determine the length of that, I believe. You know, whether it's a full-time or a part-time, we can do that.
And it, yeah, and so just to clarify, it is not our village employee, so they're, what? Not our village employee.
Okay, so it is all contractual.
Yeah.
Is this becoming industry standard, employees?
It is. It, it definitely is, and I, you know, there's a lot of different layers to it. Another layer maybe that I didn't talk about is de-escalation. When, to Trustee Ganzie's point as well, there's, CESA is supposed to be, now I think they pushed that back to 2027. But that is supposed to be a phone number that somebody can dial, that circumvents law enforcement completely. Social workers would show up to the house, and unless it turned into an emergency situation, there would be no police contact. So that is something that the, the mile marker kind of keeps getting moved further and further away, but now it's 2027. But the, I'm sorry, your question one more time, Trustee Hopkins?
Is this just like industry standard?
Yeah, and, yeah, so it is, and part of that is for de-escalation. It's dealing with people while they're in crisis. And our co-responder model, it, if it's a, in order for the social worker to come out there, it has to, the scene has to be determined to be safe and, and secure. What we see is, just like in a lot of domestic situations, there's highs and lows, ups and downs. One second, it can be calm, the next second, it's really a tough situation. One of the goals is when they are on scene, when there's a co-responder model, they're able to intervene and engage maybe sooner and better, more, better trained, more qualified to, to de-escalate a situation like that and get somebody on the right path. You know, it is, it's, it's industry standard. You see a lot of places that are hiring their own employees, and there are pros and cons to that. We, you see a lot of people that are under contract leave to go work for, for a municipality. It's usually a higher salary, better benefits, and some more job security. But the nice, there are benefits to being contracted with NEDFIS. They have an abundance of resources. They offer these other programs. And if something, you know, if you had one social worker and there was an extended absence or they, you know, go on a two-week vacation, your program kind of comes to a screeching halt. Whereas if you had, like us, were contracted, we can have somebody that would fill in. NEDFIS also provides us interns, which is a benefit with them, that if the workload does become too much or our, our contracted employee is on vacation, they'll, they'll fill that need as well.
Wasn't this initially, wasn't it initially, the social worker was to help the police staff with PTSD and that type of thing? When did it become a community outreach? I missed that part.
Yeah. So that, that is what Dr. Kami does. Dr. Kami Juswin, she is our police psychologist on staff. And so she is, she does help with the community as well. But she is primarily for employees, for staff. To be able to talk to her, go through, we're doing mental health screening, grief sessions that are coming up, grief counseling. When we did have an employee that passed away not too long ago, she helped coordinate that, bringing out resources and...
Is that the Safety Act?
That is.
The, the, the mental health screening is required of the Safety Act, so Dr. Kami does those. The social worker is more outward-facing, more residential, residential servicing. I would suggest, you know, we've seen the, the 42% increase. If the board is more comfortable looking at a part-time addition and evaluating it, you know, to see, you know, have we overstressed them? Is that need for a, a second full-time person really there? Or I, or is that, you know, the things that we want to cover in terms of availability, is that able to be satisfied with a part-time rather than a full-time? I don't know if they'd be able to attract that person, but that could, that could be NEDFIS's problem. The other thing that I would want to look at is the, I, I'd be very wary of some of the additional programming. I don't want to create, I don't want NEDFIS to create work for themselves here. So the, we've seen the diversion program for, for students be really effective. That's something that we have looked to do for a long time, is to be able to make the, I don't want to say punishment, but the consequence of drinking or smoking or doing those things, those kinds of things that would normally put them into the juvenile court system extremely expensive for parents and, you know, could be life-altering for the juvenile. We now do that with the social worker, and I cannot find fault with that program at all. And that is something that we have seen grown quite a bit. So while I appreciate the department wanting to have a, a second full-time person, maybe then the logical step is to have a second half-time person, and then we can evaluate with the kind of information that the mayor's talking about.
Yeah.
Is the 42% human nature, okay? Is the 42% increase or a portion of it possibly because we have a full-time social worker and it's just convenient to do that?
That I don't, that I, that I don't think. And the reason I say that is to, trust... And the reason I say that is to Trustee Hopkins' point. It is becoming a greater thing that we're seeing across other departments, across other police departments. The type of mental health crisis calls that the police department is getting is growing. You know, that's why years ago, we instituted the CIT training and the senior training. And there's lots of other training that we were layering upon our police officers to fill that role. And I think taking some of that away from our officers to deal with and the follow up. I mean, we were asking our officers to do the repeated follow up with these folks. And that's not an appropriate.
Yeah, that's the part that I think I really like is if it's a situation where you can take a really hot, like a crazy situation and put it on somebody else's plate and the officer goes and does his job, that's beautiful.
So I think we, we could probably look at, look at that particular point a little bit closer and measure the effectiveness of the, of the program.
If this is something in, in the industry, are any of the conferences have anything focused in this area where they could help say like, here's metrics that we use to show the benefit?
Yeah, and, and some of that is contained within the quarterly reports we get. And we can share some of that information. Yeah, and, and really just to go back one more time to the 42% increase. One thing, one step that we did take early on was we set a very high threshold because we didn't know what that workload was going to look like. So as we developed the program and kind of progressed through it, we, we were able to let more referrals come in and open and expand it beyond where we started out initially. And not because they're, you know, they're very deserving categories. We just started out on a, on a slower scale, not knowing exactly what the workload and time it was going to take to effectively manage all those referrals. So part of that, we feel that there's even more necessary mental health related calls for service that we do take that we aren't necessarily getting referrals for now. So I think that's something that we could potentially have that increase, but also we can, we can.
Is there, could you provide us with what the original categories were and what they've been opened up to?
Yeah.
And that's just, let's maybe take some baby steps instead of going, I would say with a full time. Let's just pull some more information together and bring it back to us.
Okay. I think the fear is that this becomes another department within Village.
Yes.
So we need to make sure that we do not let this get out of hand where other entities like Hanover Township and Wayne dump it on us because we're building this new department. So I think that's the general consensus of why I have a fear of.
And you 46. Everybody, everybody likes it, everybody appreciates it.
And I, and I should clarify, the flow is one way. We don't take referrals from the township.
Yeah, okay.
And keep moving forward.
All right. Thank you for that detailed information.
Yep, what do you guys have next?
Where, what do we got?
And then just to finish up, professional services, the contingencies budget is staying the same. So no more questions on professional services. We will move on to our last fund, which is the central services fund. And that starts on page 152. So I just briefly wanted to mention again, we made two major changes to the central services fund. One, we created the information systems department within the fund. And John is going to go over this in a few minutes. And then we also, as I mentioned, transferred out some items that we felt didn't really belong in central services. So those totaled $174,900. And these were items like the printing of the Bart letter, code red, village weeds enforcement and police building maintenance. So you will see this when I go through the line item. But up next, we do have a new personnel request, so I'm going to turn it over to Janelle.
Thank you, Matt. This is on right? Okay, I think, no, this, I think this is on, can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Good evening.
You got three minutes.
Okay, well, that'll, that's all I need. So we are proposing the addition of a building facilities manager position into the budget. Currently, the management of essential building systems, including HVAC, fire suppression, electrical, plumbing, security systems and regulatory compliance and also general maintenance is fragmented across multiple contractors and departments. We feel this decentralized approach often leads to inefficiencies, uncoordinated maintenance efforts, increased costs and potential safety risks. So just to give you a little bit of history, we did have a designated custodian up until January of 2016, at which time the position was eliminated to cut costs. That was a custodian. It was just general maintenance and a little bit of cleaning. The custodian duties were farmed out to various individuals within the village. Our calls for service were like changing light bulbs, troubleshooting plumbing situations.
I think Bo Nzinski used to take out the garbage in the bathroom, right?
He did. We, we just talked, we just talked about that at staff this morning. He, he was very proud to take out the recycling toters. But right now, what, what happens is our three divisions in public works are called upon to come to Village Hall and complete those requests for service. Oftentimes what happens is there's, we do have a ticketing system somewhat sort of that's managed through our secretaries and public works. But what happens is each division is signed a week at Village Hall and then they get a list of items that they have to take care of, changing light bulbs, doing various maintenance duties. The deliveries to Maintenance Hall are now being managed by the benefits coordinator in, in human resources. She also orders supplies for the building. So it's, it was literally like exploded all among other divisions and departments. In October of 20, October of 2024, so last October, Irma sent a representative to conduct a facility inspection, which is required for our continued membership in Irma. And the very first recommendation, as noted in the report, is to conduct monthly facility inspections. Tyler spent an entire day with this individual going through all of our facilities. And the very first recommendation was to, like I said, do a self inspection program. It's to improve efficiency, preventative maintenance, security inspections, corrective actions and compliance with safety and health regulations. So his recommendation was to actually have a designated building slash facility administrator to oversee all of our municipal buildings. One thing that I'd like to mention is in 2020, we added a brand new police department, which tripled in size and we do not have a facility manager to oversee that facility. So it's been, like I said, it's been farmed out to public works, some in administration, some in information systems. And so this person would oversee all of that, like the contractors that we use for our HVAC systems, our, our elevator inspection program, which we had an employee get stuck in the elevator one day, twice actually, two different elevators. Overseeing the fire alarm panels and systems. Oftentimes if we have an issue, it's either Dan or information systems or somebody. I mean, like right now, it's just really like who's ever available. And it's inefficient, it's not cost effective. And it's, we, we just want one designated person for centralized coordination and a resident expert, so to speak, to coordinate these efforts. What I do want to add, because I think my three minutes is up. But what I do want to add is we believe that this position would benefit the village, but we would further evaluate the position within the context of the wage and benefits study that we will be bringing back to the board for review. So we would put an asterisk by this position in the budget and would not hire this until we brought that fully back to the board within that context of that study.
Good idea.
So would that, would that manager then have staff to go change the light bulbs? Or is this manager going to order supplies and change the light bulbs and, okay?
No, the manager's not going to change the light bulbs, is he or she?
It's a building facilities person.
Right, it's not really a manager. It's going to be a reclassified, or like a senior maintenance worker.
They used to call them, yeah, they used to call them custodians.
Right.
So I guess what I've heard is that that person's going to be.
Engineer, I think.
Taking, writing up the tickets, but then they're not going to be the one changing these light bulbs, right?
They would.
They would.
Do the maintenance, the day to day maintenance things that currently we will call public works off of a job they're working on and say, hey, we got an issue over at Village Hall, can you deal with it? That requires a guy from the crew to go to Village Hall, deal with that thing. This person would actually be able to deal with the light bulbs or a plugged toilet or whatever comes our way. That person would be able to deal with it. But their main job would be more of, instead of being reactive, being proactive on maintenance for HVAC, roof inspections, the fire system, all elevators, all that stuff. Right now, we're pretty more in, in reactive mode. When it breaks, we call someone to fix it. This would be more of getting those contracts with the, the maintenance. We have maintenance contracts that they would manage basically. So the vendor for HVAC and all that, that person would schedule and walk the facility with that contractor and make sure they're doing what they need to be doing.
But I hope what your study reveals is that it would be better to get one contractor company instead of a new employee that we have to pay benefits to. But being as we're going to actually rely on the study to implement this position, I think we can just move on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I just, I had one quick question on, sorry. Is it going to include the golf course facility as well?
All, all Village facilities.
So this company that we, or this person we hire is going to need a form of transportation. So I'm worried that that's going to come with another request for a vehicle. So if we can look at contracting out, we wouldn't have that request.
Also, all these things, can they be implemented into the GIS system so that we know, you know, that person puts into the system, you know, the furnace needs to be repaired every five years or filter checked or whatever. So just like we're using for streets and everything else.
Yep.
We, can we use the facility manager to implement that?
That would be the plan, yep.
Yeah.
As far, there's Village vehicles here that are shared, I believe. There's a pool, so there, there'd be a vehicle here that they would be able to use if they have to go in.
Great, thank you.
That's it.
All right. There were seven minutes, but.
So moving on to the next page. We have no capital outlay requests. The line item, so the salaries you see would be for the new position that we just discussed. Unemployment benefits, we've been, just been budgeting 20,000. Service agreements, that's where it's going from 241,000 to 57,000. That's due to all the items that we moved out of central services. Building maintenance services is going up 24% and this is due to new janitorial services. And other than that, pretty much everything is staying the same. We're reducing contingencies slightly. Any questions? If not, I'm going to turn it over to John, who's going to go over information systems department.
And why is the janitorial going up 24%? Janitorial.
Uh, Scott's going to answer. The company that was under contract last year stopped doing their work. We went through the proper procedure to get rid of them. And we were operating on an old bid. So the price that you see is the second bidder in line that we hired.
Can they change light bulbs?
Let's be done.
Really?
Come on, John, you got three minutes.
Yes, sir, I will make this quick. Uh, let's go down to the numbers. Oh, you got them, yeah, go down to the numbers. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to present this year's information systems budget. I'll walk through our key technology investments, including IT, infrastructure, GIS, security and system upgrades. This year, our focus is threefold. Replacing outdated equipment, ensuring system reliability and making financially responsible technology upgrades that reduce cost over time. Move down to the GIS position, please. This year, I am asking for a GIS technician position. Our GIS team plays a critical role in providing mapping applications, data analysis, asset management and public information, ensuring that all departments have access to accurate and essential data for effective decision making. As the village continues to grow, GIS services are becoming increasingly important in supporting departments like public works, PDS, police and administration. Adding an entry level GIS technician will enable the team to handle requests more efficiently, freeing time for critical initiatives like integrating GIS with other systems. GIS plays a key role in village operations, managing everything from police jurisdiction maps and water system tracking to zoning updates, stormwater management, business district planning and infrastructure maintenance. GIS helps departments work more efficiently and make well informed decisions by maintaining accurate data and streamlining processes. By bringing on a GIS technician, we can enhance the efficiency across multiple departments, improve interdepartmental collaboration and further leverage technology to better serve the community. GIS has been instrumental with Restaurant Week, Coco Crawl, Marion Bright and community building events such as the Community Garden. Requests often, requests often come in at the same time. The GIS admin is busy working on projects like the capital improvement program map or the hydrant flushing schedule map. And the application specialist is working on the EPA water inventory or the capital improvement plan application. They are often pulled from work to do drone flyovers. Instead of, instead of prioritizing what gets done, we want to make it all a priority and make sure it all gets done.
Again, this position will be evaluated within the wage and benefits because we're right at about, you know, they're working on the final draft of that. So again, just putting this on your radar that we would like this position, but it will be evaluated within the confines of that report.
How many people currently are working with GIS?
Uh, presently, we have two people and an intern. So we have a GIS administrator who is in charge of handing out who is in charge of project management. We have the application specialist. So a long time ago, with, with GIS, it was just maps. You know, you make a map, here it is. Over the years, it has evolved into a more online, interactive maps. And now they're turning into applications where you can go in and actually interact with them.
In 2023, you had a request for an additional information technology.
Yes, ma'am, we did. In fact, he's in the back room right now.
Okay, so how does that differ from this?
Uh, he's a IT technician. The person I'm asking for is a GIS technician, so a, a geographical information systems person. It's a specialized position.
In mapping?
Yes.
Okay.
If this comes back with the study that says that we need this, this would also come back before the board for a vote again, correct? Thank you for describing the position. Gurbey?
Okay, for capital improvement, the big items we have, a hypervisor replacement. A hypervisor allows multiple virtual servers to run on one physical machine, saving space, power and money. These virtual servers are critical for keeping the village operations running smoothly. The current system is outdated and no longer supported. Replacing it will provide reliable service for the next five years. We explored different options. Dell proposed a $220,000 solution, while Microsoft Azure's cloud based option costs $300,000 for only three years. After evaluating the options, the scale solution we are looking at provides the best balance of cost and performance.
So this is like a server that's here that hosts virtual servers?
Yes, it's a lot cheaper than going online and doing it through a Microsoft Azure or Amazon's, or Amazon's A to W S solutions.
Are there extra costs then for like cybersecurity that we need since we're hosting it here?
For cybersecurity, we use, we have multiple layers. We have an intrusion detection system that sits out on the internet that blocks a lot of stuff. We, we use enterprise grade firewalls at our internet and we use CrowdStrike for our local desktops. We have multiple layers. With our CrowdStrike, we actually get that through the Illinois Do It program. So it's at no cost, which saves us about, let's see, it's $50 a pop, times about 200. It saves us about 10 to 20,000 dollars. We're also looking to replace a couple of servers, our Village Hall and Public Works server. We're also looking to replace a couple servers, our Village Hall and Public Works servers, these, these servers control our network logins and user authentication, since they are seven years old and no longer supported, replacing them will ensure employees can securely access the network without disruption. We also have our desktop computer replacement program, in the past, we replaced sixty computers per year and then skipped a year. We are moving to a steady annual replacement cycle, replacing forty desktop computers yearly, this approach keeps our desktops current and prevents performance issues. In the past, we ordered monitors with the computers, this year, we are saving money by not purchasing the monitors and ordering less computers. We're also looking to order some laptops and docking stations, this year, we replace, this year, we are replacing eight laptops and introducing eight new desktop, eight new docking stations. Currently, the department has both a laptop and a desktop. These docking stations will allow laptops to replace desktop computers, making workstations more flexible and reducing the number of desktops that need replacing. The change will improve efficiency and generate cost savings by not having to replace the Also looking to replace the Public Works copier, it is seven years old, the replacement parts and support will soon be unavailable. Also asking for a drone for event video recordings, we plan to purchase a drone to record nighttime events, providing high-quality footage for social media and public engagement. This will allow us to create more dynamic content, improving communication outreach, and our social media content, as our social media content, content expands, seeing video footage of the tree lighting event, National Night Out, and even the Fourth of July Parade and Carnival would be a great addition. Okay, moving on. We have our professional developments, this has not changed. We have our, we have our professional associations, being part of professional associations allows us to connect with others in the field, stay updated on new technology, and share knowledge. Organizations like GMS and Erisa help our IT and GIS teams stay informed about best practices and industry trends. These groups also provide networking opportunities, allowing us to collaborate with peers, share solutions, and continuously improve how we manage technology for the village. This year's budget is focused on maintaining a strong and modern technology infrastructure, while making strategic investments for the future. By upgrading key systems and making cost-conscious decisions, we are improving the village's efficiency, security, and service quality. Thank you for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very exciting, John.
I can tell.
All right, thanks, John.
You lost me at hyper-vision ventilation. Does it come with a turbo on it?
Charlie does have a good fan on it.
What else we have, are we good to go?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you, staff. Back to Kevin.
Thank you, Chairman, what's your name again, Laporte?
Yeah.
Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pursuant to section two C five of the Open Meetings Act to discuss purchase or lease of real property for the use of public body, including meeting held for purpose discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, and section two C one of the Open Meetings Act to discuss appointment, employment, and compensation or performance of specific employees.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Swansky, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
I don't wish.
Laporte? Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned to his executive session.
My friends, yeah. I said, where are all my friends?